Okay, I call the Planning Commission, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, to order at seven P M. First will be roll call. I'm present Chair Luke Maruziak, Vice Chair Tesman.
Present.
Commissioner Kilcup.
Present.
Mr. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. Murphy.
Present.
And Commissioner Smith has notified us that he has a conflict on Tuesday and will not be able to attend. So we do have a quorum at this point. See, remember it's over here. Move that we approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on to the council liaison report.
Greetings, Commission. It's great to see you all here in person and Happy New Year. I wanted to start by thanking all the commissioners for their hard work on so many items in two thousand and twenty four. The comprehensive plan element recommendations that were forwarded on to council were adopted many times without any changes in no small part to the commission's very hard work in in considering all the different aspects and stakeholders in all those different parts, which is just a massive task. And there's another element coming for the comprehensive plan this year related to climate change. And of course, there's another heavy lift, which is what the commission is considering tonight of the updating the retail overlay. And I think this is going to be a massive boost to our downtown retail businesses that have been struggling, especially in recent years, and will help us avoid more retail losses over on center. So thank you so much for your hard work, and I look forward to working with you continued as your liaison, having been reappointed at our last meeting by our mayor pro tem. A couple of things that I wanted to update the commission on that the council is working on. First, the council adopted the transportation impact fee on new developments. This will help growth pay for growth as it is supposed to. Historically, the city has approved developments with various agreements that the developer would help fund various transportation improvements. This slowed the approval process quite a bit and left uncertainty for developers. Most cities in our area and just throughout the state use a transportation impact fee instead, which we had not adopted as a city. Quite the outlier in that respect. There's a list of projects that may need to be done over the next couple of decades. They may or may not actually be completed, but they are on the list of things that may be coming. And some of which will be funded primarily by the city and some of which will get, if they are done, substantial help from the state. A couple of examples, there are some intersections on Snoqualmie Parkway that may be upgraded. And there's also the two oh two bridge that may need to be rebuilt or something. There are some problems that the state is working on with regard to the two oh two bridge. And those are things that are coming in the foreseeable future. As an example of how the impact fee would work, I just picked two off of this long list of different kinds of uses as examples here. A hospital would pay six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars per thousand square feet. And a hotel would pay four thousand nine hundred and four dollars per room. So where does all that come from? Well, each fee is based on the estimated number of trips that are generated per development unit. And different kinds of developments have different development units. It could be like a single family home is a development unit if it's that kind of use. It could be square feet for retail, obviously rooms for a hotel or a motel. And really, the whole thing just ends up being a giant exercise in dimensional analysis with very strange units like person, trip, exits, and weird stuff like that. Basically, it all goes into a big algorithm, and those are the numbers that it spat out. The other big item that the council is considering is updating utility rates. The reality is that there are some pressures that are causing the rates to go up. And I wanted to share a little bit about what those are first. Council is attempting to rebalance the structure of the utility billing where there are several different sectors. There's multifamily housing, there's low retail, there's high retail, et cetera. And historically, multifamily housing was overpaying relative to the other sectors and high commercial was underpaying. So in trying to rebalance that, that's going to shift some costs around. And some sectors will go up more and some will go up less than others, and that's why. There's also, in terms of why rates will go up, a very large and to a degree unexpected, at least in terms of the timing project that more or less has to be done, which is replacing the water retention pond that is up by the golf course with a big tank, effectively a reservoir that's contained. And that is very expensive to something like ten million dollars, something like that, very expensive. So that has to be paid, and within the next couple of years, that's going to be done. So big cost. Another thing is that during the pandemic for one or two years, I think it was only one year, I'll check my notes. But anyway, rate increases were frozen because people were really struggling at the time. Fair enough, but that doesn't mean that the costs to the city were also frozen. Those continued to increase with inflation, which, as we know, over recent years, although more or less under control now, in recent years was very high. So we have a little bit of catch up to do there. And then there's just that very fact of the increased inflation recently that is on top of it that I already mentioned. So those are all reasons why rates are going to go up quite a bit. The council did meet and have a discussion at our last meeting, and we sent it back to committee to go through the various projects that are coming up with as fine a tooth comb as they can decide, is there anything that they can push out further without making the water in the pipes go backwards, that sort of thing? And it's hard to say what they'll find to create additional savings or at least smooth out the curve of rate increases a little bit, but they're trying as best they can at the Parks and Public Works Committee. All right, on that very cheery note, that's all I've got for you tonight. Thank you all, and have a good year.
Wait, a few questions?
Oh, yeah, of course, of course, yes.
So, yeah, let me tee it off and I'll do the round robin. First, on the traffic impact, is the new hotel going up on tribal land considered in that?
It's not within the city limits, so I do not believe that they would pay, although I could turn to staff to confirm. But I do not believe that the tribe's hotel would be subject to the fee.
Correct.
Was the traffic impact that you described, was that at least considered in, you know, how it is going to impact the traffic?
I don't believe so, because again, the development is outside the city. It wouldn't be something that would be within our jurisdiction to factor in. Rather, the way the traffic impact fee works, at least my understanding, is that it would be based on development that occurs in the city, and that would be generating new trips, which would cause either wear and tear or a need for an upgrade to the intersections or an upgrade to bridges or something like that. But it would be what was caused by that development in the city and that that's where the fee would be assessed. That, you know, if someone built some giant development just outside of town, even if that did impact us, I don't believe that we could put that fee onto a development that's in the city to cover the costs of that other development. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe that that's how that works.
Okay. And you mentioned about a retention pond is being replaced with a tank on the golf course. I mean, I jog around there all the time, there's at least six retention ponds I can come off the top of my head. And why are we doing this? And is only one pond that's affected?
Yeah, so the best way I can try to explain it as a non-scientist, science teacher, not an actual scientist, is that the water that has been historically used for, what's it called? There's a name for it, where we reuse the water.
Gray water?
Yes, that we had historically drawn from the lake that's right next to the golf course. Eagle Lake, I think is the name. I could look it up on Google, anyway. And that the state has decided that that is just too open to possible contamination from various things. Whether it's actually been a problem in fact or not, I couldn't speak to, but there's at least a potential for that. So they are requiring us to contain it in a contained reservoir.
And it's only used for irrigation, all right?
Right.
And they only draw from that lake, they don't draw from the other retention ponds?
I believe it's only for part of the year, if I remember correctly, that they draw from that one.
And who's requiring it?
The state, and I believe it's Department of Ecology. I'm getting hit on some staff, okay. Department of Ecology.
Interesting, interesting.
Yeah.
All right, let me do the round robin. Commissioner Kilcup, any other questions for council member Johnson?
I guess the question I would have is what is the like primary concern that they have of the use of that gray water if it were to be contaminated, if it's being used for irrigation on presumably a golf course that requires a ten million dollar investment? But what are we so worried about?
Yeah, exactly. I am curious what what information is public facing and what isn't before I answer in a meeting. So I'd like to ask staff before I come back and answer that question.
Maybe staff could come back and provide more information at the next meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
As a secondary is, could we push back on that?
My understanding is we can't at this point. That the various avenues that had been attempted had been exhausted. There were some very creative ones.
That's all for me.
Okay, Vice Chair Tesman?
I think the only question I had was you mentioned as part of the basis for the utility rate increases that multifamily was overpaying versus others. And so I was just curious, like, how that was, you know, determined the overpaying?
Yeah, I am looking at this thing here, okay. Okay. So, yeah, it's based on a utility rate study that we contracted with, I get the name here. What's the name of the company? F C S. And it was in their analysis of the cost of service based on effectively how much is being used versus how much is being paid that per volume and staffing and all those various considerations, what is actually needed to deliver service to each of these different uses is different. And also, they were paying different amounts and that the amounts that they were being paid did not match up with what was needed to provide the service. So there was an analysis, and if you watch the last council meeting, which would have been on the thirteenth, you'll see that there's a PowerPoint presentation that they went through where they discuss some of that calculation as well. I don't remember every detail off the top of my head of how exactly it works. We have these nice bar charts that show the different amounts that they were paying and how far off they were. Yeah, and definitely those were the two big outliers, were the multifamily housing and the larger commercial.
Thanks. Sorry, Commissioner Lambert?
Two questions, one on the rate increase because of this ten million dollar reservoir or tank.
Yeah.
That is so that the golf courses can use our effluent water in order to irrigate, correct?
I believe that that would be the primary use is for irrigation.
So all taxpayers are going to have an increase in rates so that the golf courses can use effluent water?
Effectively. Well, because then you'd have to think, what would be the alternative, drawing from the river, which has its own concerns? Yeah, along with other stuff like that.
Okay. One other thing, I'm sorry, I didn't watch the council meeting. Did we talk at all about use rates for the use of water? Because it always has irritated me. I'm, I naturally try to conserve water, but it matters not if I double my usage, it increases my bill by three dollars.
When we've looked at the issue in the past, it works out to being that that is the most equitable way for the various considerations like that. And it doesn't work perfectly for everyone, but, you know, there aren't any shoes that fit everyone either. So that's kind of been like the closest middle ground that councils landed on. Not everyone's happy, but they're not too mad either.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy?
Nothing further to add.
Okay. Thank you, council member.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'd like a bit better understanding on that, ten million dollars, maybe.
Oh, one other thing that I want to mention there was the other thing is that we can't use the clean water because we don't have the facilities to generate that much cleaned water. Yeah, so that's why it has to be from that particular source. Yeah, that are, as I mentioned, bring in some environmental concerns. Okay.
Okay.
At this point, I move to approve the minutes dated December second. Is just to remind everybody, that was a sparkling meeting. We had a public hearing, and we all agreed that it was probably a good idea just to take B R two out of the historic retail overlay and exclude Maple Street from the historic retail overlay and include some of Falls Avenue. So by doing that, it seemed like we cut through a lot of the problems in the handering that we were dealing with there. So if you haven't taken a look at it, please look at it now. Again, I move that we approve the minutes dated December second, two thousand and twenty four as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. And now we come to a special business election of chair. And I'm going to read summary. First regular meeting of each calendar year, the commission shall elect one of its members as chair of a member to serve as vice chair for the term of one year. Should a chair or vice chair resign or be removed from the position prior to the expiration of their term, commission or committee shall proceed to the election of a new chair and or vice chair. No member shall serve more than two consecutive terms as chair. So just as a highlight there, I'd actually just finished my third consecutive term, and that was due to a little dispensation to finish the call plan, but I'm definitely not eligible to remain as chair for this election. So in event no member volunteers, the mayor could appoint a chair or vice chair. So commissioners, does anyone wish to nominate a fellow member to serve as a commission chair?
And it can't be you?
It can't be me. Well, I'll nominate Vice Chair Tesman then. Would you accept the nomination?
Yeah, I would accept, thank you. I would have to get my parliamentary procedure up to snuff. You set quite an example.
Okay. Now that you've accepted the nomination, can I get a, is there any second nomination? You chair?
I would nominate Commissioner Kilcup.
Are you, do you have to accept, do you accept the nomination?
Aye. Sure, yeah, yes.
Okay, then.
Reluctant.
So we have five members here, let's see how we do this then now. Do we not vote?
Yeah, we, no, yeah, I think we all vote, right? We ran out of all vote, otherwise it's going to be like a survivor. So.
Quick clarifying question, are both as chair or chair, vice chair, or?
Both as chair right now, we're doing chair, and then we're going to do a vice chair, and then whoever's chair is going to actually take it from there. So do you wish to make any comment? Commissioner Tesman?
You know, some newer faces on the commission I've been on since January twenty two. I pretty much served as vice chair that whole time, so I've had the fortune of, you know, working with Commissioner Maruziak, Chair Maruziak for this whole time and seeing the work that goes into structuring our agenda and moving that agenda along. So I think I could run with that. But again, I think this commission, and I nominated Commissioner Kilcup for a reason, is comprised of folks who've served for a long, long time, wealth of experience. And so I think we're well-served by anyone on this commission, frankly.
And Mr. Kilcup, any comments?
I would be very pleased to be vice chair.
Yeah.
All right. Let me do a show of hands, and then we'll take the names for all those voting for Commissioner Tesman as chair. Raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous, Commissioner Tesman is chair. All right. At this point, I'm going to do my last function here before I hand it over here. Do we have a nomination for vice chair? Actually, since you asked, I'll nominate Commissioner Kilcup as vice chair.
And do I accept?
Do you accept it?
Yeah, I would accept.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, then again, show of hands, all who vote for Commissioner Kilcup as vice chair, raise your hand. It is unanimous. We've unanimously replaced me as chair with new chair Tesman, and the vice chair is Vice Chair Kilcup. All right. I think you're ready to go, here you go.
Oh, man, okay. Keep rolling with it.
Yeah, you've done an amazing job.
All right. Bear with me, this will be a little bit of a learning curve. But all right, we completed special business election of the chair. I move that we move on to legislative policy items, regulations, the historic downtown retail district overlay amendments. I personally was not present for the last one, but you said there were some changes that were made to the area in question for the overlay changes? Or is it pretty much what we've been talking about probably for the last two meetings?
Well, just to highlight, basically, the contentious part was when we included B R two, there were a lot of residents in there, even though they were, you know, in B R two as a retail zone. There was a lot of reasons for them not to be in there, and they expressed strong objection. So after two public hearings, we said, you know, let's make, you know, we don't need to fight this. Let's just take B R two out of that retail district. And then let's add a little bit of the Falls Avenue, and we'll have a retail district that looks very close to where we are and that we still have our aspirational thing. So that was pretty significant, actually, of the last meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't know if staff wants to add any comment to that.
I would just say that to recap, on September or December second, two thousand and twenty four, the planning commission reopened the public hearing, heard additional feedback of the proposed amendments. And based on the comments, the planning commission directed staff to reduce the area, which was proposed to have the expanded retail district overlay just to the B R one zone and a portion of Falls Avenue. So that's shown in attachment four. So it is essentially the first original proposal that we were discussing before the planning commission inquired and suggested about expanding it to all of B R two. So.
Okay, good, sounds so, we kind of ended up where we started, but it was the result of public feedback and debates, so that's good. Okay, and so then we're pretty much left to take a vote on the changes as presented in the current agenda and modified over the previous meetings?
Yeah, the draft code amendments have been updated to reflect your most current direction to staff. And it would be appropriate to discuss and vote on a recommendation for the city community development committee.
Okay, well, I guess the thing probably makes sense is to just go round robin, see if there are any additional comments. And if we feel like we're in a good spot, I'd probably move us to go ahead and vote on our recommendation. So if that works, I'll just go from left to right. Commissioner Maruziak?
Yeah, no, I think we came to a good spot at the end of last meeting, so I'm okay.
All right, Commissioner Kilcup?
Agreed, I think we simplified things, and I was really happy for the feedback from the community so we could hear them.
Hundred percent. Commissioner Lambert?
I've got no other feedback, no.
All right, and Commissioner Murphy?
No, I think we were responsive to the concerns and revised language here with what's that. Don't know where the comments.
Okay. Great. Again, I'm sorry I missed that last one, but I'm glad we got that feedback and adjusted accordingly. Okay, well, at this time, I move that we vote to recommend
the code amendments as outlined in the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, Chair, I just wanted to also remind you that part of this overall packet is also the mixed use final plan amendments that go hand in hand with the downtown retail district. So some of the same requirements, like, for example, the ninety percent have been pending and waiting your discussion on the downtown retail district, so.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that, Community Development Director Artete, I appreciate that. Okay, and so just in line with that, hopefully everyone's had a chance to go through the agenda. Let's see, I know you guys, so it looks like ground floor minimum retail use ratio for Snoqualmie Ridge, non-applicable minimum time allowance goes to one hundred and twenty days. And looking at seventy five percent of the downtown retail overlay zone along railroad and also the one hundred and twenty days. I know we've had a lot of discussion on that. Looks like, looking at table two, the proposed retail use requirements will up to ninety percent for the retail use ratio. And that's both applicable to Snoqualmie Ridge and then what we've outlined for B R one and along Falls Avenue. So this will be the biggest changes. So I'll go ahead, I'll open it up, see if there are any comments on this portion of the changes. Again, going from left to right, Commissioner Maruziak?
Yeah, no, I'm happy with him as written.
Okay. Vice Chair Kilcup?
Yes, I am also pleased. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lambert?
I'm also happy with the way they're written.
Awesome, and Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, just confirming, this also is inclusive of the opaque material blocking the windows along center, okay, great.
Yeah, staff, okay.
Great, yeah, no, I know we had discussed that, you know, several meetings back, but yeah, this looks great. No further additions here.
Okay. Awesome, well, the comments complete hovering all areas. I think now we're in a position to vote. So I move that we vote on the recommendation for these changes on retail use. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all opposed or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very none, okay. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Maruziak, hard work on that.
Everybody, actually.
Yeah. All right. Going back here on the digital. Thanks. All right, open it up for items of planning commissioner interest. I'll start with you, Vice Chair. Vice Chair Kilcup, any points of interest?
I'll start with, uh, with you Vice Chair. Vice Chair Kilcup, any, uh, points of interest?
I, yes, I have one, um, the splash pad. Um, I, I was told, I can't remember by whom, uh, that some additional signage has gone up, but now we're looking at summer twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure who might have that update.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, so basically all I could say about that is that, um, I don't believe that, uh, anyone knows exactly when it's going to be done, but the intent is that it will be completed by summer twenty twenty-five. Um, it could be done next month and it wouldn't really matter because we wouldn't be able to open it until twenty twenty-five or summer. Um, so that's probably what the sign to be in reference to is that that's when it could open. Cause between now and then, it wouldn't matter if it was done or not. Other than perhaps wear and tear on the materials. So it's, let's get going. Let's get it done.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, I, I, I assume your concern was like, does it open in July, you know, fourth of July, or are we talking about like the beginning of September twenty, summer twenty-five?
Yeah, the question specifically was, do we have an update on timing? Um, so it sounds like it's prior to summer. Okay. Yeah.
Thanks, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
I have nothing this week.
All right. Um, Commissioner Murphy?
Um, I raised this at a prior meeting and I don't know if this is, this is probably beyond the purview of this group, but just like to be spoken aloud here, uh, the electric scooter and bicycle situation on the ridge that continues to, perhaps other places too, but continues to be a problem. Um, we have incidents where a neighbor of ours, um, was, uh, hit and struck and taken to the emergency room with injuries. Um, we have kids, um, uh, playing the grass along, um, uh, along the field next to the splash pad and to the ba- the basketball court. Um, but more importantly, I think we're like, we're a, there's a tragedy like that is just like potentially going to happen here. And I, I, it seems as though like the, the hands are, uh, of the police may be tied or others may be tied and maybe there needs to be some sort of a regulatory fix, you know, whether it's a reclassification of these vehicles. I'm not the expert here. But I know that I feel like this has gone on for quite some time. There's all sorts of chirping on social media, but also anyone that drives around can see. So, um, it's just, it's, this is just as a citizen, I hope that this is something that the city can tackle because, um, you know, it would really be horrendous if there was, um, some hopes or a horrible accident that would take place. So that's all I got.
Yeah, and I do. Please.
Oh, hi. Good evening. I'm Dina Burke. I'm your new city attorney. Um, to answer your question about the e-bikes, that was just discussed at the five P M public safety uh, committee meeting. Um, Police Chief Lynch did a presentation about it. Um, the, it's something that the city is working on at the, what, what staff are working on ideas about it. There are some limitations because it's mainly children that are doing it and realistically, um, these days it's hard enough if you have a, a minor who's committing, you know, not to diminish the, the safety importance, but there's larger crimes like domestic violence and DUI that because of the nature of things in the state, it's already hard to prosecute and hold minors like that responsible. So this is largely, um, an infraction. And if they're under the age of sixteen, that can become challenging to, um, issue a minor an infraction. So we're looking at different tools that we could have in our tool belt. Um, like impounding the bikes, signage on trails. Um, you know, maybe we're going to set up some sort of educational outreach. So there's a lot of different tools in the tool belt and we're, we're looking at how we can utilize them.
Great. Appreciate the answer. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right. And you're all good. Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Maruziak?
Um, yeah, just two things I'd like to share. I was, uh, in New Zealand in December and it was very interesting. Um, my son was competing in the world championship triathlon, Ironman triathlon. And I was struck by how the Maori tribe was so interlived with the locals. I mean, it was incredible. And how they, uh, pushed their history, how they were proud of their history, you know, spotted as it was in some places, uh, on both sides and how much tourism they got. And I just thought, boy, if ever there's an example of partnership that didn't start off, it started off pretty rocky, that was a good example. Uh, another thing about New Zealand is I think everybody may or may not know, it was colonized pretty heavily by the British and any place you look, you don't see indigenous stuff. If you see a forest, it's Monterey pine that they took from California because they could have timber for their ships, right? And they brought in these mink-like things. I can't remember them, but they wiped out most of the Kiwi. And so they took this area of thousands, I don't know how many, thousands of square foot of indigenous forest and they completely blocked it off. And they have a sanctuary there, um, and they made sure that they preserve the Kiwi and stuff like that. And what we wound up doing to go through there was zip line. So in order to preserve the sanctuary, they actually have zip lines where you can go up to this very high place just outside of it and you're ziplining over it to certain spots. And you're looking down at places where you can't walk or anything and it was spectacular. And at the end of that, you're so pleased about it, they were then taking donations to keep preserving that sanctuary, indigenous area. And I was struck because a few years ago, we talked about, uh, a zip line from like the back of the ridge down to the backside of the falls. And people went bananas about destroying the, um, environmental things and the wetlands and everything else. I'm just like, again, maybe we could learn something from looking around at what they did because it was very impressive. Anyway, if you want to know more, I could, I could share more about it. But on those two issues, I was really struck by the partnership, uh, with the tribe. They actually opened up the triathlon. I mean, they, everybody was signed. They did a, a native thing to open up the triathlon in their own haka dance, which is pretty intense, by the way. And, uh, uh, and then that sanctuary thing with a zip line, which again, I think it was amazing how much money they were getting by, uh, showing that indigenous forest in a way that nobody could touch it. It was pretty impressive. Anyway, that's all I wanted to share. Great trip. I recommend it on your bucket list if you've never been. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Commissioner Maruziak. Um, I don't have anything, uh, on my end. Uh, so I think that closes out, uh, items of Planning Commissioner interest. Uh, if we can go on to the future agenda list?
Yeah, so we are, um, we are here on January twenty-first and we've projected, um, the next Planning Commission meeting, of course, on the first Monday in February, February third. Um, possibly bringing back the, the wireless code amendments. We started that quite a while ago. Um, and, um, staff has been working with, um, um, some of our, um, neighboring wireless carriers, the Wireless Policy Group, um, has a consortium of different, um, interested parties that have been kind of weighing in and providing additional public comment on this particular draft amendment, set of amendments. So once we compile all their comments and it gets through our own legal review, then we'll be able to bring it back. So not, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we can make this February third deadline, but we're going to sure try for it. And then hopefully we'll have another update from our climate change committee, which, um, our new chair has been participating in and we're about halfway through, um, some of the material in that group and very quickly wrapping up, um, maybe with maybe only two more meetings left, two or three more meetings left.
Awesome. Yeah, no, it's progressed quickly. Um, and I'm so happy to see that, uh, that's annotated on the, on the calendar here because I, I know they're going to send out the, the scheduling request or whatever and I hadn't seen that yet. So that's great.
And one of the other items, um, that kind of tended Leon for the February seventeenth, although we don't have a major, um, item of discussion listed is, um, additional history, um, history, what we call one oh-two, maybe, um, former Chair Maruziak can elaborate a little bit on more on that. He actually, um, was discussing, um, this is an opportunity for the Commission when we mass last met.
So when we talked about the history that we had done, that, uh, we saw the videos of Dave Batty and if, uh, you weren't here to see it, I don't know, Commissioner Murphy, you saw that. We, we were pretty impressed. It shows us from, you know, as early a history as you could scrape together to, um, to just before the ridge is built. And I said, boy, wouldn't it be nice to bring in some of the folks? And I was thinking, um, former Mayor Matt Larson, who was on the Planning Commission and the council and then as mayor, the whole time when we went from sixteen hundred to, uh, for a while, we were the fastest growing city in the state of Washington. And how that happened, what the history was, because when, uh, Dave Batty would talk about, um, this is why this is named Dogwood. You know, and this is why this is the only street name for a person. Um, other than that, I didn't really know. So, I mean, I, I go around Heather or, you know, I'm Heather Avenue, Dogwood. I walk around the streets Curtis and I'm wondering, um, how was this chosen? And I remembered that, uh, Mayor Larson, before he left, um, at least gave one video where he talked about how they mixed in the multi, anyway, how they put it together. And so whether we agree with it or not, I think it'd be interesting at least to capture the history where it's relatively fresh in detail and add that to the history that, uh, Dave Batty put together and make that, make that the total history of Snappaw.
Was Mayor Larson's, um, information already recorded?
Some of it was. Uh, there was at least one case, um, there was, you know, talk about, um, concerns with how it was built. And he went out and says, here's why you don't have cul-de-sacs. Here's why we did it this way. It was, it was a very interesting video. Yeah, I don't think it was comprehensive, but it definitely, uh, is in memory as something that was very intriguing of there were decisions of why things were done the way they were. And it'd probably be good to get a history of it, particularly since we're now, you know, investigating whether we ought to improve those or evolve those. Be good to know how we got here.
Mm-hmm. Former Chair Maruziak, did you also want to speak about, um, the schedule and, um, in-person attendance or maybe the new chair? You'd also talked about meeting time for this Commission.
So, so we talked about, could we change the time? And it, uh, proved problematic, I know, for Commissioner Lambert. And I know Commissioner Smith, uh, if it's Tuesday, he, he can't make it, right? Which is why he's not here right now. Um, so we weren't, we weren't coming up with, uh, hey, it's good to change the day or it's good to change the time. But we all said we'd go back and think about it. So that, that's the prompting of that one. Um, so is there a better day time than seven P M on one and first and third Monday? Is the question.
And so, and so for you, Commissioner Lambert, this, this Monday at seven is the best day?
I could do later, just any, like, Tuesday would be okay at seven as well. You just have a hard time getting out and then being home before six.
Sure. Yeah. And then you're scrambling to get here. Yeah. Um, did, did Commissioner Smith indicate his ideal time?
Uh, I, I don't recall. Do you recall, Christopher Kilcup? I, I know, I know this time, Tuesday doesn't work for him.
Yeah. Okay.
Otherwise, timing wise, he was flexible.
Yeah.
On Monday. His Monday time. Cause weren't we looking at a, an, prior to city council?
Yeah.
Time frame. And that was a no-go for you, but I think Commissioner Smith could.
Right.
Is, um, is it possible for us to communicate via e- city email and just better coordinate this? And obviously I take the lead on that.
Sure.
Okay.
Could you just do a doodle poll?
I know.
I know. Is that, I just, is that, I've never used that before.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, it's so helpful.
Yeah.
I, I, are we allowed?
Councilor Johnson?
Um, I, I wasn't sure if I heard that correctly. Did you say communicate via email?
Yeah.
With each other? I wonder.
On this topic.
City attorney.
Yeah, I, I would just hesitate to open that can of worms because you're kind of, you're meeting as a group and we want it to be public. So.
Yeah, it becomes a potential OPMA.
You could email, you could email me one at a time with your availability for the week.
But you just can't talk to each other. You could talk to, um, two others.
Okay.
In a group of three, but once you have four, then that's quorum.
It's effectively.
And then you're having a meeting. Yeah.
Oh.
Well, so the good.
Options and we basically.
Thanks. I appreciate it, Councilor Johnson.
Can we do a poll?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Could we, one option would be staff could provide a list of times, like, and we could basically do like a live doodle poll at the next meeting. Like we could have, I don't know, keep it as is, Mondays at seven. I mean, I sound like later than seven worked, but I'm going to guess that most people don't want to go later. Sorry. Yo, Monday.
Yeah, and obviously you're trying to balance out, you know, obligations with staff.
Sound like Tuesdays at seven were potential. I know we have other meetings that use this venue and space. I think we were talking about potentially like four thirty on Monday could work. Was that the other time that we were?
Um, possibly. I mean, um, even, um, today's staff was thinking, well, what, what if everybody rolled up a half hour, you know, and you started your meetings at six thirty and not seven? What if you chose a day that no other committees and commissions met, like, like a Wednesday or a Thursday, you know, um, you know?
Nope. I, I saw. So we could provide a list of times and days of the week and present those and we could do voting. Um, but it sounds like, could, does six thirty potentially work? I'm trying to figure.
Well, I just, without, without Commissioner Smith there, like, I think the good thing is, like, we don't have to make this is, decision tonight, right? Like, we can certainly wait a meeting or whatever. And so, and you all have the visibility on the room that we don't. So, yeah, if we could, if staff doesn't mind identifying maybe five realistic times that are good, both on staff's end and potentially viable on ours, I think we'll encourage max, for max attendance at the next meeting. And then this is also a good time to plug. If you didn't see it in your city email, staff reached out, uh, trying to confirm the best email and phone number. Um, so please, please make sure you get in there. I know I'm really bad about getting in the city email. But I think, so that worked for everyone?
Just a request. Could we see those, uh, potential times prior to that meeting?
Wouldn't it be in the agenda?
Yeah. 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 Just so I, I need to confirm childcare.
Totally get that.
That, that works on, uh, okay. Perfect.
And, uh, just a reminder, the, um, twenty twenty-five, we're all supposed to be in first, unless it's a extreme case, um, we're supposed to be.
Yeah. For the handbook. Yep. Awesome. Okay.
Sure.
Yes.
If I may.
Yeah.
Uh, one other consideration, uh, is that the, uh, committees, the council committees, um, usually should meet in here because there's the potential that we could have large numbers of audience members come. And I think that the Planning Commission, uh, amongst all the commissions is perhaps the most likely to have the same thing occur. So I think that, uh, the Planning Commission should use this space. There are the commissions where they can overlap with committees if needed and they can be in another space. It's a lot smaller. But that's just another consideration is the Planning Commission would probably be best suited here as we saw, uh, was it the last meeting or the one before that anyway, where it was packed wall to wall. So, yeah.
Makes sense. Thanks, Councilor Johnson. All right. Thank you. And then Community Development Director Artete, would you mind covering the, uh, work program?
Sure. So we, we put this updated work program on, um, not to say that everything is, um, etched in stone. Is that the phrase? Carved in stone. Uh, but here's the things that we, you know, rolled over from the end of last year that we're still working on and added some new things that, um, we might be able to accommodate this year and put some parameters around it by a Q one or Q two or to be determined. Um, so that includes the, um, the Snoqualmie mixed-use final plan amendment and Center Boulevard, which, you know, effectively moved out of, uh, the Commission today. We're still working on climate change and that's associated with a comprehensive plan amendment. The retail district code amendments, um, that's up with the mixed-use final plan. Um, we talked about wireless code amendments possibly coming back in early February. Um, we've always had the signed code on there. Um, it's been kind of a low priority, but we might be able to take a look at it, um, now that, that we have our, um, city attorney on board to help determine, you know, what, what items might be missing from some of the last major pieces of, of court rulings that occurred. Historic preservation's always been on there. Um, we've all, we've talked about the historic design review color palette. We, that came up recently and you know, maybe it's time to refresh that and see, do we really want, you know, to come through and have historic design review board on every color request, even if it's just a shade or, you know, slight variation of what's already in there. So maybe, maybe that's a ripe discussion. Um, and of course, um, we've talked about now that we've got mixed-use final plan amendment under our belts and, and, and historic, um, retail district, that it's.
our belts and, and historic um retail district, that it's time to bring the citywide development standards um on board. So that's now, we've got the ability to roll it, roll over, you know, development standards that are floating out there from SR1, SR2, um even Kimball Creek, and bridge those all together in a hybrid and put them in as our development standards into the municipal code, so we're operating off of one municipal code, um one set of development codes in the municipal code, I should say. So I know that sounds like a lot, but um, you know, we've already kind of started to prep that work by, you know, opening up the mixed-use final plan and allowing some amendments to occur, including rolling over those design standards or development standards, I should say. Um, and then on future, you know, uh future work that we're not quite ready, um and we don't know if we'll be right, quite ready, you know, this year, would be the Mills, Mills site design standards or, you know, so that, that's just kind of been waiting ripe for, you know, economic um conditions to, to change over beneficially. Um, there might be some other code amendments related to um co-living under some new legislation that's mentioned there on the RCWs. Um, and permitting commercial buildings to multi-family, um as well as maybe some design standard review and, and procedure requirements that came out of a recent House bill. So we're still doing work on those to kind of figure out what those are and how, how impactful they are to our code.
All right, well, that's good. Sounds like there's uh still plenty of work to do. That's great. Um, awesome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. I think we've covered everything, so I move that uh we adjourn at uh seven fifty-one. Can I get a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, have a good night.
You, congratulations.